As you know.
Wow, what's her name?
As an event.
Amelia.
Oh, she's cute.
That was my great thing.
Oh.
To get. For twenty-five minutes. There was it. We got out there. When we got out there.
Covid.
Gave us the car.
But I mean that.
We had the time. It was driving and I could drive anywhere. The traffic.
Yeah, no.
Would have been down on the ground.
This is. Cindy, I think we need to.
I can't take.
I'm mad at people.
I was like, oh, I'm glad it was a custom. But.
Still waiting. Four C.
Oh.
And I don't.
Far as we can try.
Four C.
Oh, no.
Oh.
You've got two different annexations.
I didn't realize.
No, no, I know. This C four C.
You can't.
Oh, I remember that. Controversial thing because I had to help myself all day long.
Okay, okay.
Well, believe it or not, my one hand. Trying to get medicine.
It's almost like you're in Germany driving on the autobahn. Get out there. Go.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are also.
Five years.
Ready to rock and roll.
And then she'll have.
Ready to rock and roll.
You know, she's with federal government.
My colleagues. Everybody ready? Yo, yo, it's. Good to see everybody tonight. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It is five thirty-three, three thirty-four P. M. And we are assembled here in the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Boardroom for. It is also August second. And we are here for the Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. And the only business that we have tonight is to set the agenda for the Tuesday, August tenth, twenty-twenty-one regular session. And anybody that has cell phones or electronic devices, please mute them or turn them off at this time. You will probably have noticed that you have a new agenda at your place. And there is a slight difference because there was an agenda item left off. The agenda that you received at home, which is Agenda Item four E. To consider calling for a public hearing for the regular board meeting on September fourteenth for a request to rezone thirty-seven point seven acres. That, the attachment, was in the agenda that you received at home, but the agenda item was not. And also on four C, there was missing the staff report for the non-contiguous annexation request for a different property. So I just wanted to clear up what the differences are between the agenda that you have at your seat and the one that you received at home. And with that.
So do we have to use them in conjunction with each other? Or do we have everything?
Excuse me?
Do we have to use these two doc?
No, no, you can use the one at your seat. I'm gonna use them both because I wrote remarks on the one that we received in our packet at home. But if you don't have writing all over your original copy, you can proceed straight to the one that was at your place tonight. Okay, thank you. Any other? Oh, that's important information. National Night Out has been canceled. Is it, do we know why?
I think there's about an eighty percent chance of rain.
There you go, that would be a good reason. Okay, so we'll just reschedule? Maybe when it's not so hot? Could be a good thing. Okay, actually, I think maybe Butner and STEM are doing theirs in October, so anyway.
Something like that, yes.
We'll see, okay, great. Thank you very much, Ms. Bowen. Okay, with that, we'll proceed to the standard opening. And then delegations, we will have Yard of the Month, which we'll have that information next week, as well as an opportunity to recognize Chief Coley and present him with his credentials and his sidearm, so he will be here with us next week.
As far as we know.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Then we move forward to Item four A, which is to consider adopting a resolution for a tentative award of bid for the twenty-eighteen D W I Sewer Main Project. Are there any questions on this item tonight?
Only one. Is this the College Street? We're talking about College Street, this one, Amy? Yeah? Okay.
It is, and I do have a comment. It's on the agenda currently, and we would like to let it remain on the agenda. We may have calls to request its removal, but that will not be done until Tuesday of next week. So at this time, it needs to remain pending further development.
Okay. And I have a follow-up because, and I'm not sure I understood all the information in the attachment, but to Commissioner Toby's question about College Street, what I saw was we had College Street A and B, but they looked like alternate options. So my question was, does that mean only the streets included in the base bid, but right now College Street and the median don't fit in the money?
D W I required us to bid it with and without the median, to see if it was less expensive with.
No, I, yeah.
And that price shouldn't have been what in there. Did it not make it in there?
It's in there, but what I'm not understanding is what I see on the sheet for the base bid, which is included, maybe a few pages in on that. The base bid says, this is for Lewis Street, Williamsboro Street, Gillum Street, Main Street, Medical Center Outfall, North College Street, and Delacroix. So North College, to me, was, you know, towards the hospital. Or, or are you saying, and then alternate one B is, so each alternate is already included in the base bid?
That is correct.
Okay. So each one of them is wrapped into that total four million and change?
I think I will confirm that before the meeting.
That would be great. Because I think we're all hoping for the median on College Street, so it'd be important for us to know if that's not actually part of it. So we've got one A without the median and one B showing a lower price with the median, so that's great, but I did want to make sure. And in those sheets that are included, they go all the way up to alternate five, but they do not actually include the information for alternate six and then seven for the hospital. So I guess we would probably need those two.
Will we just put a summary, not the line?
Okay.
So probably a little part of the confusion is coming in, but I will.
And summaries is fine, but we just don't have anything for six or seven. And related to that, so it refers to the hospital being expected to pay some part of their request. Do we have a sense of how that will be determined?
We are trying to set up a meeting with them. They're a little bit elusive.
Okay.
Discussion with them out on site because of the expansion they're planning in the future. That's why some of this got rearranged.
Uh huh.
Additional stormwater work. And now we've got to go back and make the arrangements for how they will pay it. And Mr. Thornton, I felt he said the O R J A and he said assistance, giving them back to the table.
Great, excellent. And lastly, in the letter that Bill Rourke includes in there, he says H. G. Reynolds is located in Hendersonville, North Carolina, rather than Henderson. So I don't know if you want to adjust that. Excellent, thank you very much. Any other questions from anybody else? Okay, moving Item B. Consider contiguous annexation request by L. G. I. Homes of Raleigh, North Carolina, of a hundred and twenty-nine point nine plus or minus acres located off of Highway ninety-six South, adjacent to Rollingwood subdivision, allow city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certify sufficiency of request to annex the property. Are there any questions on this item at this time? Okay, we'll move forward. Item C, this is where the attachment information in your original was slightly different than what we have now. Consider a non-contiguous annexation request on behalf of C. A. B. L. L. C. for seventy-six point eight-seven acres located off the Outer Loop and Landis Road by authorizing the city clerk to investigate the petition's sufficiency. Are there any questions by any members of the board on this item?
Where's Landis Road?
That's where the first school was located.
Thank you.
And that is related to a question that I had, which would be, but this was at the time when the attachment looked like we were discussing rezoning, which is Item four E. Would it be possible, we have a map, but it just really shows that property. Is it possible going forward to get a map that shows the property in the context of the properties around them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just to help understand. And related to that, also showing, because this, I think this was a discussion about the E. T. J., part of the property falling within the E. T. J. and part of it not. Is it possible to have a map that shows the city boundaries and the E. T. J. boundaries? And as the city expands from requests like this, what is the process for expanding the E. T. J. commensurately? And I'm looking at our manager.
You have to make that request of the county, and the county would basically vote to allow you to expand your extraterritorial jurisdiction.
So is that, you know, maybe we can get that map and look at it and ponder it and maybe consider whether we should be attempting to do that, because otherwise what happens is we won't have that buffer zone anymore.
Yep, we'll do what we should be doing and what the purpose of an E. T. J. is for is to prepare and present that area in a similar fashion with the development requirements that the municipality has to prepare for the future of being within your city.
Right.
Naturally, you want to grow that way.
Okay, so that's a reasonable thing, to get a map showing those things?
I think that's a reasonable thing.
Fabulous. Any other questions from anybody else?
No.
Okay, excellent. Moving on to Item D. Consider approving a grant project ordinance to establish a special revenue fund to account for monies the city will receive from the United States Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. So this is kind of exciting, and the city manager provided us with some excellent information from the School of Government that starts to inform us about how this money can be used. Does anybody have any questions at this time for the manager or on this item? Okay. Then we move forward to Item E, which is to consider calling for a public hearing for the regular board meeting on September fourteenth for a request to rezone thirty-seven point seven acres from R. A. Residential Agriculture, which is one dwelling unit per acre, to G. R. ten, which is general residential, which is up to ten dwelling units per acre, which is moderate to high density residential development. Does anybody have, and this is this item, again, that piece of property, and our clerk will move these two items so that they're side by side in the agenda, so we know we're talking about the same ones. Does anybody have any questions about this item?
So this is the same as the previous?
The Landis Road property.
Yes. But this is a reason.
We're going to ten per acre, ten residential lots per acre.
Up to.
Maximum.
Wow, that is pretty dense.
Yeah.
So are we talking townhouses or are we talking single-family homes with no yards?
It would be multifamily.
It would be multifamily.
Apartments?
I'm not sure what the exact term for that is.
We don't know how it's going to be developed until they come back with a sketch site by the show and how it's going to be.
So following up on that is related to some of my questions before, when Commissioner Fields asked about where this was, is thinking about if we're going to be considering this, who are the neighbors and what is the impact? And I think everybody would be excited about the potential for this kind of development, but want maybe some more information about this so that we can be thoughtful and certainly have a sense of who is in the immediate vicinity that's going to be impacted. So, so I think my request for a map that shows that. But I also, having gone through, and Commissioner Toby was part of that process with the new U. D. O., and we did discuss the, you know, that there is the potential for conservation development, which keeps more land open, which encourages more open land and condensed development. Is this location, I mean, is this the type of location where we could encourage developing along those lines to maintain some of the rural atmosphere that I suspect the neighbors out there are out there for?
Yep.
I think it is, and I think that also we're going to be able to determine a lot more when we get that preliminary sketch plan, because what this tells me is it'll be a clustered type development with those residential units clustered.
And then open space. But so, but they're asking for a public hearing, and usually when we have the public hearing, then we were asked to go ahead and approve, but right now we don't know anything.
Well, actually, we're just approving the zoning, but that's it. And this did go before the plane board where all the neighbors were notified, did have one neighbor to show up and did have several to call and ask questions, but only one showed up. She did not have any comments, she just wanted to hear the presentation.
Right.
The public hearing is for September, so I mean, we got a month.
Okay, you're right, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Forgive me. So is it possible we'll have more? I mean, I can understand them not wanting to go through the expense of doing plans until they know whether the zoning would be approved, but what is the likelihood that by September we would have more information?
Now, what more information do you have? Because a sketch plan, I would imagine they don't have any of that until they know what size lots they can have. So what more information?
Right, well, I guess that's exactly what I was saying, is that, so you're between a rock and a hard place.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can't move without the other.
No.
I'm sorry, I was going to get.
One can't move without the other, so.
Right.
Who has the first move?
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, Item five is consent agenda, pretty straightforward. And then we move forward to dates to remember. I do have a question on the August thirteenth, Music on Main. Do these start at, this says six. I feel like I had a communication with Rebecca that in the past it said five-thirty, but I might have invented that.
It started at six.
Six.
It started at six the last time I was given. Perfect, perfect, that's all.
I can double check.
Nuno?
It started at six.
Because I went, I went early thinking you was mentioning five-thirty.
Right.
But it started at six.
Okay, excellent. Then I was confused, thank you so much. Okay, so we have that. And August twenty-first is the Hot Sauce Window Contest through the twenty-fifth of September and Friday, September third, Cruisin' Oxford, which is the first Friday. Okay. Just.
The, and I have nothing to do with it anymore. Alava five is August twenty-six, I believe. At five, that's at five.
Okay, there you go. So, great, no, that's five-thirty to eight-thirty, isn't it?
That's correct.
Commissioner, thank you. Thank you for including that.
What was the date, Dan, in August?
It's Thursday, August twenty-six, I believe, this morning. At five-thirty.
Five-thirty to eight, Brian.
Five-thirty to eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Yep. Okay, excellent. Commissioner Grillreit, do you have anything to add?
Well, at some point, we'll, we get a follow-up for the nine-hundred thousand dollars that Cheryl received for COVID that we plowed for last September. We received the money sometime in January, February, probably, and I'm not sure what we, what we've done or what we were going to do with it.
I think we'll, we can provide that. Cheryl and I'll talk about it tomorrow, see where we are, and probably put something in your packet or send that out separately.
Or, or would there, if, if you know there are some kind of things rolling with it, would it be maybe reasonable to set a little time on the agenda so, so people could know in general what's happening with that?
Cheryl, are you comfortable with that?
Whatever form and whatever situation you want, I'll be.
Be glad to do that.
What are we calling that money? What are we calling that money? To give it the right title?
Community Development Block Grant.
Yeah, C. B. G., okay.
C. D. B. Yeah, C. B. G. C. V., dash C. V. for coronavirus.
All right, so we're going to be updated at the next meeting, at our meeting Tuesday. Regular meeting.
Unless there's nothing to say, in which case.
We'll, we'll say that.
We'll, the manager will let us know.
And, well, the reason I was asking is because community people keep asking about the money, what do we do? And I'm, you know, sitting there looking, I'm like, you know, I don't know. So, and the M. Wood follow-up, the last I heard, Ellen, we were, you were meeting with them on that following Thursday.
Yep.
And I was sort of expecting information, this go around, but I did see it because I'm trying to wait patiently. I, you know, I'm practicing that.
It's government now, government works slowly.
And just curious.
And it's still working slowly. But we did meet, we did receive their draft report. As a matter of fact, I had some conversation with them again today. After receiving the report, we took the opportunity to take the time to read it and make some comments back to Freezing Nichols, and they have sharpened their pencils and also are talking about adding an additional option, so it's still not a finished product at this point in time. So it is still being worked on. I will tell you that initially I was a bit surprised at some of the pricing related to the project, so, you know, the instructions were sharpen the pencil and keep working, basically. So that, that's what's going on with that.
So we're looking at this for the bid product part of it, or we're looking for it for their recommendations?
Oh, we will be developing a recommendation and probably providing that report in a Public Works Committee scenario, have that conversation with that committee about how it needs to emerge, or should it?
Anything else? Anything further you want to ask on either of those items?
Don't, don't, don't give me more time, girl. I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Toby?
I promised I wouldn't ask about the roundabout. But I just want to give an update on the dog that caused me to get this tethering ordinance involved, and the dog that started it all off is now in a big fenced-in yard with a new doghouse and off the chain.
Whoa.
So there's a vast improvement there, and I think kudos to the board for passing that, because it does make a difference, and that's one, and it will continue to make a difference.
Kudos to.
Thank you.
Kudos to you for taking this.
You're welcome, John.
Oh, you're.
Kudos to you.
I'm sure the dog really appreciates it.
I'm sure.
I'm sure that dog does. And I'm sure, I'm trying to remember who was the person that initially reported it, but he must be thrilled to.
He is, he called me over the weekend to, and I was in Nashville the weekend, so I was pleased to get that call.
That's great, that's great.
Turn it back, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Bridges?
You know, speaking of the roundabout, I've had a few people come to me and say, don't you think it's a little lopsided? And of course, I think there was an explanation from our manager about why it looks the way it looks. I just couldn't remember, but I'm serious. People said, y'all roundabout is lopsided. So.
You see the picture I sent you? A picture of what an M. O. L. looks just like it.
Yeah.
And it's slugged just like it.
It's us.
Okay, so, so that's natural.
Go into your emails, and you probably, what you need to do is print up that picture and keep it in your pocket, so that if somebody approaches you on the street, as they often do, you'll be ready. You'll be ready to say.
Again, I remember the manager saying something to that effect, that this.
At least you remember I said something.
That's right, and it was, it was, that it was not unusual for the roundabout to look that way.
It looks a little different this afternoon, they were pouring concrete.
Yeah, I see, I walked over there and watched for a little while. Looks like they're coming along, but they said it's not going to be done until the end of August.
We're working on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we need that baby done.
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Curran?
I read in the, in a magazine or newspaper somewhere, I can give you the article, the City of Boone received a ten-million-dollar loan for downtown revitalization through USDA. So I called and the manager was tied up, so I never talked to him. Would you be interested in contacting the Boone Town Manager and see? And it said in the article, several other rural towns also received this, and I don't know if we can afford the loan or not, but it'd be worth looking into.
I'll be glad to contact him, find out that information. I met him in this past June.
Okay.
For the first time, he's from Georgia, just came from Georgia, but I'd have met him, yes, sir.
Second, if you ride through Oxford, Hillborough Street, Williamsboro Street, College Street, Dan Lane, the worst-looking building in the City of Oxford is owned by the county. Now, they've moved out, they don't have to look at it. Mike Pepys has moved, he's there, and he looks at our building, he doesn't look at it. If, if they are planning to continue to use it, it needs to be painted. If they're going to tear it down in four or five years, like I've heard, it still needs to be painted. Maybe not a twenty-year paint job, but pressure wash it and spray paint it, do something.
What building?
The old fire department.
Is that the, where D. S. S. child support is?
It's beside Sunrise.
Plan inspection.
It even looks worse, by the same.
We've mentioned that.
It's the worst-looking building in town.
It is.
And you know, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I've had a couple of conversations with the county manager, because if you look at the building that houses Uptown one-oh-one, I remember, I thought, oh my God, they are going to have a time with that side, the original side, because it is pitted and falling apart, and I thought they'd spend months doing that. And I remember it came back one day and it was like done. He used this incredibly thick special paint that is meant to go over damaged surfaces, so he didn't, I remember, I talked to him about it, and they didn't do any major.
It's not impossible.
It is not impossible.
It just needs.
So, so, yeah. What do you think, Mr. Manager, can you?
You want to know what I think?
Yes.
I think that board members of my board need to talk to board members. I think that, uh, board members of my board need to talk to board members of Mike's board.
Okay.
I have talked to Mike about it more than once.
Okay.
Big player, too.
You know, he's got money that he has to spread everywhere throughout the county, and apparently that's not a real high priority because they are talking about, you know, some major changes in the next three to five years of, uh, with those county buildings.
But are you going to leave it looking like that for the next five years?
That's what he told me, that's what Mike told me.
And they were given some ridiculous, so you know what? Having a conversation with Scott Phillips is probably worthwhile as well because they were given some, you know, really ridiculous estimate for getting it done, which is not what it should cost.
That's ridiculous. I mean, if, if you only want it to last three to five years, paint it. It's going to look better than it does now.
I agree.
And it's the worst-looking building down there.
It's not getting any better.
Last thing. That two years ago, we met with D O T about why do they have a turn lane on Spring Street on to Granville Street? And you go down Hildburgh Street and want to turn left on M L K, and there's no turn light there, there's not a turn light. Friday afternoon, traffic was backed up to Edward Jones, which is beside one oh one. Everybody wanted to turn left. You could have gone down, turned right on Broad, turned around and gone back and gotten there quicker. And, you know, he didn't, they didn't even know there was a turn lane on Spring Street on to Granville. We're going to look into it, we hadn't heard, and I know it's been two years ago.
Yeah.
Could we talk to them again? Do you remember that, Amy?
We, we talked to them about that, and we asked them to look into it. They told us they would, but not to prompt them again to see whether or not there is anything they can do. We also talked to them about putting in a left turn signal so that, you know, at least even if you, you know, got up there, you could actually turn left instead of waiting for all the through traffic. That's what makes it back up.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, if we could hear back from them. Okay.
Thank you all.
That's all of my complaints.
Excellent. Well, we, we know you're working, that's great, thank you. Commissioner Fields?
My, my thanks.
Okay.
Well, I, I did enjoy, um, standing in for the mayor at the, um, Granville anniversary. Granville County anniversary. I enjoyed it. They had me at one place, and I was supposed to be speaking at another place. I thought, oh my God, can't do that. But I did, um, um, give your, give our appreciations and thanks to Granville County for what it has done and what it is doing. And it was a really nice turnout, and I enjoyed it. And I think, uh, we gave out of.
That's great.
We gave out quite, quite a number of, um, souvenirs, and people were really, really impressed with what we were giving out, especially the children when they were getting the little earbuds, you know, that was just phenomenal. Um, and then I gave out a few cups to, because we didn't have as many cups as we did anything. And, uh, but people really enjoyed the, um, souvenirs that were given out, especially the bag.
They loved those bags.
And, um, kudos to Melissa for, for developing the, the history. I think everybody saw the little, the history, historical printout. Everybody, and the numbers that she had on the back was, they are so informative and handy. And, oh, they were really impressed, you know, with that, so.
She did an incredible job with that. Do they, are there any left of those?
Yes.
So maybe, can we have one at everybody's seat next Tuesday night? Because they, I, I haven't seen them in the hard copy, but, and she and her in, the intern.
Yeah, I have too many.
Which whose name right now is eluding me. Um.
After being there all day, Quan, with them and giving them out, you would have thought that I would have thought enough of myself.
You didn't get yourself one?
I, when I got ready to leave, Quan, I did exactly as I was directed by the city manager. He says, put everything in the bucket, and that's exactly what I did.
You gave, you gave me three.
Did I?
I didn't get one. I was there giving them away, and I didn't get one.
There wasn't much left.
I, I have.
Well, I have plenty of them.
Huh? But people were really, they were really, really impressed with that. And, you know, with the historical aspect of it, but the information on the back. Numbers that we get ready to call, and you can't remember it and don't know where you wrote it down at, you know, so.
Yeah, that, that was great, and you were there, I gather?
I was for.
Yes, I was.
Twelve thirty, yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, so Cindy, Cindy went and helped set up, and I want to thank you so much for, for everybody that went and, and represented. That was great, it sounded like it was a huge success. And we do owe a special round of applause to Alyssa and her intern, whose name I'm forgetting right now.
That's right, I'm trying to bring it up.
For creating that, that handout, that really something incredible. Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
Are we aware of any kind of troubles with the downtown traffic signal lights? I came through town today and sat on Main Street, right there in front of Courthouse and the Hub, for an enormously long time, just watching traffic going up Hillsborough and Willsborough while we sat there.
It's always like that.
And the one coming off.
It didn't, Danny, I, I know, and I hadn't been fond of it to begin with, but this seemed to be even longer. I mean, we had traffic, like he was talking about, or you were talking about, backing on up on those downtown post offices.
Really?
It got to maybe, uh, Romanos, whatever that, no, Oasis.
Oasis. Whoa.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll certainly go out and take a look tomorrow.
We need more roundabouts.
Time it.
In France, you know, in, in France, they just paint them out of road and put a couple of bollards up and boop, they're done with stop signs.
Light finally did change, but it took to be an extraordinary long time.
And then it gives you ten seconds.
And, and it's.
And then again, walking this morning, the freeway stopped there on, you don't even make it. On Hyde and Forest Streets. Speedy Gonzalez came straight through, coming from townhead the other way. Never so, never hit a red light, so.
We're giving out all the tickets we can.
It goes away every now and then, but then it comes back.
One issue that I've noticed with that forest stop sign is that the tree is now covering the stop sign. And so I ran it mistakenly, and then as I was passing it, I saw it. I mean, so it is, I, it, you know, I'm, I'm a creature of habit, and, um, I did, you know, but it is what it is, but the tree is, is. Officer, we need to cut the tree and put the truck back. We're going to put up stop signs, we need to be able to see them.
Just admit it.
Yes, there we go.
Jack, I do have a question.
Please, yes, ma'am.
Hey, what a freeway do property, what renters have with property owners to get them to prune and or cut? My question, my daughter lives right over here on Spring, right, right in front of the gym. And when you come out of her driveway, you've got to get into Spring Street to see coming to the left. You know, and I keep, you know, I said, Johnny, that's the property owners.
That's that piece of.
It's to the left.
It's to the left of when she's coming down out of that driveway.
Yeah, you, you, you know, and it, it is, it's just dangerous for anybody coming out of that driveway to be able to see what's coming. Right now it's good because the roundabout, you know, streets block, but when it opens back up, that.
So, you know.
We do have, um, the code of ordinances that addresses that.
I knew I had that.
Violation of that code would subject them to a potential fifty-dollar per day fine type scenario. So we utilize that as our enforcement agent in trying to take care of these little issues.
So is that something that we have Antoine Rice go address? Or do we just send somebody from the street department, they assess and they just lop it off and?
The last one that military and high or forest, I'm not sure where delineates their change is. But I sent Antoine, or requested that Antoine, as code enforcement officer, go out there and take a look at that one and make that determination and make contact with the property owner and provide notice and, and do that, trying to get it cut down so that you could see.
Yeah.
Did you, did you take a peek at that picture that somebody had called me about two different areas off of Industry Drive? One is when you come out of Wendy's, that might be our property. I think I sent you, I sent you pictures. So when you come out of Wendy's on to Industry.
Some of those.
To, to the left. And I don't know if that's our property or not, but it might be.
It may be.
And then when you come out where the car wash is on the other side of where Peebles was, to the right, it's also a little bit difficult, that, that not yet, so those, those two.
I know that we addressed some of those out in that area. Stephen Blasko and I were talking about that, and he was having a conversation with the D O T about when they were coming into mode to cut those back.
Okay, great, excellent. Is that it, that, that it? And, okay, we're done. Commissioner Bullock, anything else? Uh, and, Ms., Mr. Thornton, anything you want to bring up?
I don't have anything other than, again, to reiterate that National Night Out is apparently canceled for tomorrow. Staff continues to work diligently on getting prepared for the Hot Sauce Festival. Planning's going well for that, we'll be ready and prepared. And just to bring up the point that, you know, with the major things that you see on your agenda, the annexations, it's here we grow again. So I think it gives you an indication of what's going on with the two subdivision or planned unit development, um, projects that have been approved with these two more coming. And we still have additional areas targeted for development, so there's a lot going on.
Yep, excellent, so we need to be thoughtful and careful about all of our decisions so that nobody in twenty years says, what were they thinking? And do it right so that in twenty years, everybody looks back and says, boy. Those folks were on the ball. And Oxford is the place to be because it's got.
What you do, it ain't going to make them happy.
What?
Not what you do, it ain't going to make them happy.
Oh, I don't, no, but we, we, we can, we can do, we can do our best to make it so that people don't bemoan the day that we approved this or that. That doesn't mean that I don't want us to approve stuff, I just think we need to be, we need to be as good about it as we can to make sure it turns out just right. So, thank you, motion to adjourn? Mr. Burnett, did you have anything?
Ma'am, I do not.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Curran? Okay, all in favor, say give your parade.
I'm going home.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of back and forth.
I don't want my daughter, you know, but she, she said, you know, always said.
That's right, because the second is the fourteenth, and this is Labor Day weekend, so the second. Okay, we still love you.
She was reading, you asked her, and she lives in Oak Hill. And she says, Mama, they come pick her. I said, about time one of them.